We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting of the Monigatia County Commission is hereby called to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with our county administrator, Renetta McLaurin. Good morning, Renetta.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Seventeen exonerations for $5,592. Minutes for regular minutes for February 7th, 2024. And also for a board review on dates 2-1, 2-2, 2-7, and 2-9 of 2024. Vouchers: General County, $484,310.57. Cole Severance, $5,000. Magistrate Court, $3794. 911, $498.20. Chestnut Ridge Park, $716.06. Camp Muffley, $1,0285.34. Mason Dixon Park, $247.98. Mon County Center, $10,005.79. Sessage Valuation, $1,0686.29. Payroll, $1,747,085.26. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $494.28. Purchasing Card vouchers: General County, $11,978.41. Chestnut Ridge Park, $571.21. Mason Dixon Park, $839.27. Mon County Center, $754.55. Sessage Valuation, $443.76. For our voucher total of $2,266,528.63. We have no budget revisions to approve. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the county website and fiduciary orders for February 14th, 2024.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent and approval item, agenda items that are presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Additional fiduciary items?
Yeah, we have three. You want to deal with these separate, assume separately?
Yes.
Okay. So the first we have is a petition to remove the executor and appoint the sheriff in the estate of Mark Timothy McCutcheon.
I would move that we accept the petition and recommend that the fiduciary that we, that we appoint, that we remove the administrator and appoint the sheriff as the ancillary administrator of this estate.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No, it's pretty cut and dry on this one.
All those in favor, signal a pop by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry, you messed me up with the order. I was thinking, yeah.
The second one is an objection to the affidavit and waiver of final settlement in the estate of Sharon C. Travis.
I would move that we refer this matter back to the fiduciary commissioner for a hearing on the objection.
Second.
Okay.
Oh, and additional to the petitioning objector would post the necessary fee for the hearing within 45 days to request that hearing.
That's an amended motion, but second.
Except.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, and the last is an objection to the annual accounting and to the application of fiduciaries' affidavit of heirs in the estate of Marjorie Langdon.
This was a two-part objection we heard from last week. The first part of that, I believe, has been taken care of with the filing of an amended appraisement to include additional heirs. So that part of the objection is seemingly taken care of. The objection is now solely dealing with a question of rents from a, from a property that's part of the estate. So I would, I would make a motion that we allow the executor 30 days to address the objection for the rents. And then if that's not satisfactory, we can take further issue at that time, but further action at that time, but.
I second the motion for 30 days.
Okay, any discussion? Mrs. Hall's here. Does that make any, do you have any questions regarding that?
Step up to the microphone, please.
I do have one question.
Okay.
Do I just need to let Stephanie know if it's resolved or if it's unresolved and it would come back to the docket or?
Yeah, that's normally the way it would work. If you don't reach a resolution with the heir that's objecting, then at that point, then it can, it can be referred back to the fiduciary commissioner for a decision on that objection or to us.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, too.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's also one other item in your, in the fiduciary folder. It's the notice to go out to delinquent and unprogressed estates regarding the next administrative closure, which would be on March 20th.
Right.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve that notification being made?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One note, apparently there are no exonerations. That was carryover from last week. So we need to remove that from the, and amend the consent and approval.
Okay.
Move that we amend the, the motion to approve the consent and approval, removing the exonerations where they're from.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is introduction of new employees' personnel changes. Sheriff?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here. I have with me Corey Moore, who will be starting on February 16th as a full-time process transport officer with eligible full benefits and a starting salary of $2,973.87 per month.
Move to approve the employee as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck. Stay safe.
Have any other personnel matters?
No.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We are now open the meeting for comments from the public. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, just raise your hand, come forward and provide his or her name and address for the record. Please note that time will be limited at the discretion of the president. Do we have anybody who'd like to speak in public comment?
Come on up.
Sean Smith from Brookhaven, 207 Piave Lane, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26508. I am running for Board of Education here in Mon County. And the more I go around and visit different schools and talk to different people and head to the VFW and hang out there, the more I realize there's a lot of topics and a lot of interesting things going on. And the more I learn, I realize how much, how much you all put in to the county and how much you all serve. And I just wanted to thank you all for everything that you do and serve in this county the way you have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Appreciate that.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing no more, I will close comments from the public. Next item on the agenda is grants. Colleen Kuhn, our commission office manager and grants coordinator.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have requests for reimbursements. The first one is the governor's highway safety program. Save communities in the amount of $3,386.96. And the next one is impaired driving in the amount of $2,266.83.
Move to approve the president signing the grant documents.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is correspondence.
The only letter, or the only information that I have is a letter that we received from Michael Callen to inform the commission of his resignation from the Monigatia County Development Authority. He's been serving on that board for many years.
He's been on the board as long as I've been on it, and I appreciate Mike's service. He's always a voice of reason in the room. And he's, he's resigned, moving on for, you know, to spend more time with his family and his grandkids. And, you know, you certainly can't, we'll miss him, but you certainly can't fault somebody for making that decision to spend more time with his family. So I guess reluctantly, do we need to accept?
Move to accept the resignation letter from Mr. Callen.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other correspondence?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Renetta, do you have any correspondence?
I have one.
Okay.
Received a letter from Disability Rights of West Virginia. It was addressed to Ms. Blaney, but to the county commission, we see the copy. Basically, it's a follow-up requesting the changes that she has made and evidence of that within 30 days for the polling places. So I'd like to put in the record and then refer this again to Carrie Blaney and she could give us an update. I know she sent several information that she had changed, but this is requesting more evidence. So I'm just putting in the record that we received it.
And Renetta, can we forward that on to Carrie to make sure she's aware of it? It might be a case of where letters are crossing in the middle. Because I believe I saw the correspondence about the issues being addressed, so. Okay. Any other correspondence?
No.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We have none. New business. Consideration of the application for relief from erroneous assessment by the West Virginia State Tax Commissioner pursuant to West Virginia Code 11-3-27 that identifies clerical errors and a calculation formula for 2,687 parcels in Monigatia County.
I move to approve with discussion.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
Tom can get first.
Oh, no, but, well, I'd like, I think we need to clarify, I'd like to hear her first, and then we can ask questions.
Let me provide a little bit of context, and then we have our assessor here, and we have somebody on the phone.
Right.
As I understand it, the West Virginia Tax Division recently identified a clerical error with 2023 property tax and oil and gas assessments that resulted in interest being undervalued. The clerical error relates only to interests in new wells that began production in calendar year of 2021 and is confined to tax year 2023 only. This is specific to eight counties: Brook, Dodridge, Harrison, Marshall, Pleasant, Tyler, Wetzel, and Monigatia. So that's kind of the summary. The individual on the phone, would you identify yourself?
Yes, sir. My name is Frank Capehart. I'm an assistant director in the property tax section here at the State Tax Division. I am sub with Assistant Commissioner Emily Kramer, who is one of Mr. Erby's assistants.
Okay, and I gave a brief description. Is there anything that you can add to that for the people in the room to understand what this is about?
That was accurate. The legislation that was passed in regular legislative section 2022 changed the method of calculating oil and gas property values. So the first year that we were enacting said rule was the well, for the wells to begin production in 2021 as related to annualization. Annualization is required so that if a producer begins producing, say, in the middle of the year or the beginning of the year, we are required to increase the values they reported proportionally. So if you reported half a year's worth of production, we would effectively double it. If you reported one month of production, we would effectively multiply by 12. Those are examples. We failed to do that for the first year of implementation of this. So that affected tax year 2023, but only the wells that started production in 2021.
Okay.
There's approximately 185 of those statewide.
Okay. And.
I guess one of my questions, this is Mr. Bloom, Mr. Capehart, when did we find out about this and, and?
Um, yeah. We, we confirmed the source of the error and the corrected values in July of last year, 2023. We worked, and I believe the counties were first notified in September after we'd had the opportunity. And it was very time-consuming to try to get the breakdown to the parcel level, but we wanted to make sure that we had the information for affected parcels for each county so they would know the extent of how many folks were affected and to how much amount. The differences are widely varied depending upon when those wells started production in the year. If a well started near the beginning of the year, the annualization impact is minimal. Still there, but if a well started in, say, December is really substantial.
This is Commissioner Renetta. Do you, do you have an aggregate total?
Of the, the amount we're talking about statewide and then also from Monigatia County?
Um, I have, we have Monigatia right here in front of us on the, just one moment to make sure that I have the right. So the original assessment for across the both the producers and all the royalty owners for the affected wells was $112 million. And then please note that is the assessment value, not the tax amount. And the revised assessment was $190 million. So that's a swing of approximately $78 million worth of appraised value. And then, of course, or, excuse me, assessed value, and then the levy rates would apply accordingly.
Thank you.
I guess one of my questions is, you know, we sent out the tax tickets, and now you're requesting us to send out an additional tax ticket now. And my concern is, you know, it's one thing it was in July, we've already sent it out. I'm sure many people have already adjusted their finances for it. And, you know, I'm, I'm just concerned, and I want to, I want to really thank Mark Music and the staff because he was keeping us involved. But I will say that I saw the first letters that were going out, and the concern was, it was, the first letters kind of made it sound like it was the county commission's fault and the county assessor's fault. And I just wanted to clarify publicly, and I appreciate Mark working on the letter so it's clear that it was a mistake by the State Department and we had nothing to do with it. Is that not correct?
Commissioner Emily Kramer speaking. Again, the final version of the letter that we sent out to all affected taxpayers, regardless of what the assessment impact was, does state that it was a clerical error made by the tax division. We never intended to report differently. Again, as soon as we discovered the clerical error on top of determining the county parcel impact, we also made sure to enact cross-checks in our own system so that this error cannot occur again. And we do appreciate the commission and the assessor taking the time to hear this application so that we can correct the assessment. With the way that the application for relief from erroneous assessment works, it is essentially state tax asking the county commission's permission to move forward with the correct agencies to determine the most efficient and appropriate avenue to assess the tickets. And it is not something that we wanted to overstep into without the county commission's approval.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the change that was made. I guess the only concern is, is that in Mon County, we have four levies and a school bond issue that are coming in a couple months. And this was just not the time to have this mistake. If it would at least been put in with the other tax ticket, it would have been one thing, but adding an additional, it's just a concern that we have. And as it says, I'm looking at like one of the letters that possibly you sent to Tyler County. Yeah, we have to approve, the county has to approve this as normally. But I just want to clear that our local assessors had nothing to do with it, and we don't assess the mineral wells. So I just want to clarify that publicly so no one misinterprets that, okay? And that, that's why I just want to clarify.
And just to be clear.
The calculation for the valuation of the wells is a responsibility of the State Tax Division.
Right.
I would say that my understanding is that the normal average county would not attempt to revalue or recalculate anything that we had provided for the overall value of the well. Their focus is making sure that the royalty owners and producers that are named are linked to the appropriate parcels on the side of the system that we all use that results in the printing of the tax tickets. So yes, the overall valuation note, I don't believe any county assessor would have had any reason to notice that there was some sort of an issue or have any responsibility to have valued the well as a whole.
And I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that and clarifying it. I just wanted the public to understand that clearly. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
And to be clear, they're, they're applying and asking us to either accept or reject, giving direction to our sheriff to go and collect these additional taxes.
Correct.
And I believe the number was, and again, you shouldn't do math in public, but I believe there's 2,687 of these tickets, parcels that would be, or would be affected. Two, only 200 of them are over $100, which accounts for about 1.181 million. So 1.2 million of, of the, well, actually, 1.1, 1, 1,187,000 is just those 200.
Right.
The remaining 2,400 or so parcels account for the difference. So it's, it's, most of the parcels are very nominal amount. But the majority of the, of the bigger items, it's only, only accounts for 200 of the actual parcels that are, account for a large proportion of the change. So. Mark, is there any, any other information that you, you guys or your staff would add for the public?
No, we're just coming.
If you come down, they can't hear you. Yeah. And if, could you also explain then what will happen if we approve?
Yeah, we're just kind of waiting on the direction of, I know Mr. Capehart and myself, we've had conversations, we've had conversations with Deena on this, and I know Emily's had correspondence with some of the other assessors there, too. What we're waiting on is whatever the decision is by the commission, and that gives the state the direction on which to go, then to allow us or to inform us on what needs to be done. I know there's been talk of, you know, ways that that ticket would come back on. And I think Mr. Capehart will be able to go over that, or Emily will go over that a little bit more in detail on their end. Because we hear different things, and I'd hate to say something that is incorrect. I'd rather for them to go with that direction on that. But right now, our position is, just like the other seven, is just waiting on the commission meetings to be concluded and which direction they've decided to go. So that's kind of where we sit right now with that. And whatever, you know, the body decides is, lets us know right then what we'll be working with, with the tax department on theirs. So.
And if you would permit, I'd like to just add on to what Mark said. I mean, I think he explained it very well. Like he said, we've been speaking with many assessors, and we've had a few hearings with other counties at this time. We have a webpage on our website, tax@wb.gov, that discusses the clerical error. And on it, we have a list of the counties and their application hearing times. And we are updating statuses as commissions are hearing them. So currently Tyler has rejected, and Brook and Harrison are pending. So we're, again, like I said, we cannot move forward until we have an acceptance. When we have an acceptance from a county, we are prepared, our legal counsel, our property tax, myself, to then cross the line and really speak with the auditor's office, sheriff's tax offices, your assessor, to determine what is the most efficient, practical way of assessing these tickets that we all, and however we can help alleviate any manpower situation we are prepared to do. But as, you know, so much of that piece is very procedural and dependent on different agencies. We did not want to cross the line and have those discussions without the county commission's approval and acceptance of the tickets being assessed.
And the other thing, too, is, and maybe it's waiting on, you know, Emily, maybe it's waiting on the decisions by the commission. But it would, what we're trying to look at is, what year would this be effective towards? Is it a '24? Is it a '25 on how this would be applied? So that may be your all's decision based on what the commission, the rulings are. I don't know. Or you may have to get with Commissioner Erby and legal on that. So I know that's been one of the pending questions with the assessors in, in the eight counties.
Yeah, and you're correct. That is very commission-dependent because it, again, it does have to do with asking those questions to the auditor's office, your sheriff's tax office. But it comes more down to practicality and the office's ability to get the assessments out. Following 11-3-27, the, it just, it doesn't have a deadline stipulated. It only discusses processing it the way that the sheriff's tax office normally would. So that's why we have to have permission from the county to ask those procedural questions and determine what is possible and most efficient.
Okay. Do you all have an order prepared if the commission approves this today for us to sign?
We don't have an order. We just have the application. And I, I believe there are minutes that would, you know, accepted, rejected, I think would be sufficient. As I didn't see any additional order language in 11-3-27.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
No.
Okay, and again, as it was discussed, this is, we're, we're making a decision on the application to either accept or reject. We have a motion on the floor to accept the, the application and a second. Once, once the decision is made, all the other steps and procedurally and administratively will be, will be addressed going forward. So we have a first and a second to accept the application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Did you want to thank them?
Okay, I think we're done with it.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for being on.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is consideration of requisition number 87 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Requisition is for $1,133,156.48. And this is for the sales tax collected in the district for the month of January.
I have a motion to approve requisition number 87 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. And again, that number is always less the statutory lien of 100K plus the tax admin fee. So those are direct dollars available for paying down the debt of the UTC STIF district. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve the president to sign an incumbency certificate for West Bankow acting as a trustee for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District.
This is just an authorization so that they can execute a sign and request withdrawals on behalf of the commission.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. And again, they require the commission president's signature because, so there's a change in the commission president. So that's why we have to re-sign the document. So it's just procedural. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve requisition number seven for the Morgantown Industrial Park Phase II Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for $3,825.34. And that money will be paid to Steptoe and Johnson.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, consideration to approve requisition number three for the Series 2021 B Harmony Grove Phase I Administrative Expense Fund.
That requisition is $2,029.30, and those funds will be paid to Steptoe and Johnson.
Move to approve the requisition as presented?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration to approve the following to appear on the May 14th, 2024 primary election ballot. One, mass transportation excess levy. Two, library excess levy. Three, fire excess levy. Four, parks and trails and recreation excess levy. Five, charter amendment for the city of Westover. Six, Monigatia County BOE School Board, a school bond levy.
Thank you.
Okay, is it your guys' preference to, to accept those en masse or, or to motion those en masse? Or do you want to do them separately?
I would suggest motioning en masse.
So I agree.
Just a clarification prior to the motion. These motions aren't our individual approval of any of the levies or disapproval thereof. It's just that they meet the requirements that need to be, to be put on the ballot. So we are just authorizing them to be placed upon the ballot pursuant to, pursuant to procedure. So I would make a motion to, to approve placing all six of these onto the ballot.
I second it.
Okay, any discussion? Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Any more new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Reports from elected officials or department supervisors? Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yeah, first, a very sad note for those of us, many of us in this room know Wes Nugent. He was riding a bicycle, and there was an accident, and he's in critical condition. And it's not looking good in the, in the hospital. So I just want thoughts and prayers out there. I mean, and it just scares us sometimes. Would you think he was just doing something he loved? He's, he's a great bicyclist, very safe, and an accident happened, but he is in critical condition. And again, hopefully, you know, I want to send, not only me, but the county commission, thoughts and prayers with him. And it's a very rough situation. Second, I had a meeting with the Sober Center Board, and we are in the process of. Second, I had a meeting with the Sober Center Board, and we are in the process of getting rid of our assets and so on and moving forward on that, so we'll keep you updated on that. And I believe that is it. Yes, that is it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Just a couple of things, a happy Valentine's Day to everyone, whatever that, whatever that's worth. But, and also to all those that, that observe and, and believe, it's a happy Ash Wednesday, it's the kickoff of Lent today. So, you can see Commissioner Secora with the, with the ashes already today, so we just move forward to that season. And just a quick comment as to the action we took on the, on those tax tickets. It wasn't done as a, as a flat rubber stamp. We really debated on this and thought about it a, a long time. It's unfortunate the way that it's presented, that there's going to be an unexpected bill to these taxpayers, but, but the economic impact to, to Montague County was, was just too high to, in my opinion, to, to not, to not go forward. It was a lot of money for the school board and a lot of money for the, for the county, so it wasn't done with haste. We deliberated for a while, but that's just really all I'll say about that, so that's all I've got. Thanks.
It's been a busy couple of weeks since our last meeting, last Thursday, we had the Partnership Executive Committee meeting, and then the Development Authority meeting on Thursday. Friday, we had staff reports, and then after that, we had the janitorial RFP pre-bid meeting, and then we had broadband RFP orals from the two entities that made proposals. So, we're now entering into the, the final stages of our review of proposals, and we hope to be able to make decisions on that going forward within, probably in the next three or four weeks. This week, on Monday, I had a meeting with the Westridge Developer just regarding Exit 155, starting to, really trying to understand how the, how the state cooperation on Exit 165 with what they've pledged and how that will work with the grant and the process for moving that forward quickly. Yesterday, in the morning, we had our quarterly Juma meeting, which is a joint use management agreement. It's the group that manages the Aquatic Center. It was a really good meeting, a lot of needles pointing up, and so a lot of, a lot of positive things that we discussed, and I really want to thank Jennifer Lindhart, who is our director up there, for all of her efforts in continually pushing the needle and adding more, more options to that facility for the, the public and just all the things they have going on there. It's really pretty impressive. Today's a regular day, and then I'm going to have a couple of days off. I do want to also speak to the tax ticket issue that we dealt with. When you look at that, it's just really kind of a matter of fairness for all of our citizens. It's, it's, it's a mistake, but it's a, the numbers are now corrected, and it's valuations as they are, as, as dictated by state code. So, it's, it's dollars that are owed to citizens of this county. So, I don't really feel like how we can look the other way and say, well, in this instance, we, we won't pass these taxes on to the entities that, that are being taxed. So, we never like, especially this commission, never likes passing taxes on to our citizens. We have the lowest rural rate in the state, and we're very proud of that. We try to keep, keep our taxes low, but this is something that, you know, it's a valuation issue. It's an administrative issue that happened at the state, and I don't, I think we would, it'd be malpractice of our positions to just turn our backs and say, well, you know, let's, let's just let that slide. So, that's just, you know, but we did talk about it, we did talk, discuss it a lot, and it's unfortunate, and we don't have to be the, we, we don't like to be the ones carrying the news forward, but it's, it's a function of the jobs that we are elected to do, so, and we're, we're, we're always going to focus on what we are elected to do. So, having said that, I don't have anything else. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, adjourned.